Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the City of Benton Harbor Commission Board to order. Let's begin with an invocation by Commissioner Edward Isom, followed by a pledge of allegiance from our city manager, Manager Little R. Isom.
Lord God bless this new year that we about to start off and just bless the City of Benton Harbor, bless this commission, Lord, that we just moved the city forward. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Clark Griffin.
Present.
Commissioner Henderson.
Present.
Commissioner Henry.
Present.
Commissioner Isom.
Present.
Commissioner Canard. Commissioner Singleton.
Present.
Commissioner Warren.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Sead. Mayor Muhammad.
Present.
You have a forum.
This brings us to the approval of minutes December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there motion for the approval?
Motion for the approval?
Support.
Motion is made by Commissioner Isom and is supported by Commissioner Singleton. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Clark Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Isom?
Ye- yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Muhammad?
Yes.
Commissioner Carey.
This brings us to approval for council table. Is there motion for the approval?
Motion for approval?
Motion is made by Commissioner, Isom supported by Commissioner Henderson. Is there discussion? Chair recognizes third ward Commissioner Henry.
Thank you Chair. There was some inquiries about these AP and someone in staff didn't answer the question and I want to make sure that they know that I'm aware that they didn't answer the question and I'm waiting on an answer. I'm sure that some of the other commissioners might be looking at the AP list now or making it be known that I did do some inquiries and I haven't gotten all of my answers yet and it has to come from staff.
Please note, Madam Clerk.
Noted.
Please call a roll.
Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Commissioner Canard?
Council table.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
No.
Mayor Muhammad?
Yes.
Commissioner Carey.
This brings us to our citizens' comment for public participation. There is a three-minute maximum. Please sign in with the city clerk.
Well, I know what's that. Should I have to do here?
You have to do it.
The last year we had, you all spoke about a twenty million dollar grant that was available. I don't know how we applied to that and we're in this table.
So, Mr. Whiston, that the public confidence for public participation, if you'd like to have a meeting with us, meet with staff concerning specific details, questions, you can do so through the city clerk.
Okay, I have another comment about the police department. I understand that if a child is out at curfew, that they ask, I get the tickets, do I?
I'm the fire chief. Unfortunately, I can't answer that. I'm representing public safety tonight. I can find out who would get back to you.
Well, the problem issue I have with that is I know that this summer and in the fall, there was a father who was trying to stop his, his son from going to, because this little kid come trap house. He stopped the child when he saw the incident, started arguing. And he told him what was he, so when he's going to a house and he's too young, he's supposed to, he shouldn't go into that location. And the police said, we know this is drug house. They told the father that he puts his hand on the child, they'll arrest him. Now, I'm not sure why you would arrest the parent who's trying to discipline this child. But at the same time, if you tell him the parent that they would be giving tickets if the child is out of the house, because if you say that in front of a thirteen-year-old, it's all ready to tell a delinquent. I mean, what, what does the parents have to do? That's the issue. I think it should be corrected.
If you leave your information, I'll make sure the director or deputy director Clark get back with you. Unfortunately, I don't have an answer to that.
If I left message and I called, I think that's not commissioner change, because I have grandkids that stay with me at times and it's the last person to give attention for calls like that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
No more comments.
Thank you. This brings us to our consent calendar. Is there motion for the approval of the consent calendar? The items will be separated. Chair recognizes fourth ward Commissioner Clark Griffin.
Separated number two.
Fully noted. Is there motion for the approval of the consent calendar?
Motion for approval.
Motion is made by Commissioner Isom and is supported by Commissioner Henderson. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Canard?
This is to, for the consent.
Consent calendar.
Consent calendar. No.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yeah.
Commissioner Clark Griffin?
Yeah.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Mayor Muhammad?
Yes. This brings us to the separated item, resolution appointing Tiffany Moore City Clerk as assistant city manager. Is there motion for the approval?
So who?
Motion made by Commissioner Henderson is their support. Support is supported by Commissioner Isom is their discussion. Chair recognizes Commissioner Clark Griffin.
Okay, so I've, I've seen a resolution. It said that it was gonna be no financial impact. But I wanna know, is it gonna be two different pay? Because there's told that it is a financial impact. And even if this money is in the budget already, the city charter's section, chapter three, section three fifty states that compensation of all officers and employees of the city shall be fixed by the commission. And I know this is something we have not discussed, pay. So also MCL, the Michigan Legislature, the section four zero eight, point four seventy-two states that employers should make, uh, uh, the city, you know, what the employees pay on. So I know that something has not been the stuff and is there a pay because it say no impact. And like I say, that would be a financial impact if that is too different pay. Uh, also, where do we draw the line? City clerk is, she's gonna be working for us and then as assistant city manager, she would be working on the, Mr. Little. So we're her boss, we're his boss. But where do you draw a line? Uh, it's for city clerk duties and assistant city manager duties, because there's already been times where Mr. Little tried to intersect some, intercept some information that I asked the city clerk to give me. And so that's something I, I, I don't know, I got a reservation about. Um, also, there's a big election coming, a big employer's election coming, and that's gonna be more duty, including the duties that she already have as nine of in her employer. That's it. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Excuse me.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henry.
I'd like to know also about the salary. You just can't, you gotta answer our question. You just can't push it through. There's a question on the floor and I'm asking in the form of my colleague here, if, if there is an additional salary attached to this position. And we need to knew, to know that.
Commissioner, it says in writing.
No, no.
Very clear. Financial impact, none. There's nothing else that we can say.
What is her duties there?
The charter says, section three point one seven of the city charter states, the manager subject to the approval of the commission should name one of the directors, which the city clerk is, director of, directors of departments, assistant city manager, who shall, when directed by the commission, perform the duties of the manager in case of sickness, absence, disability, suspension, removal, or resignation of the manager.
That's called clear. Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate your question.
Uh, then let's add an, add additional question about the budget. I, cause I kinda trying to figure out how much money was in that line item. Uh, so that's another question that I need to ask, I guess, by answer.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Canard.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, one of the things that I see, already, we hear the employees are overworked already and serving in two positions leave us to know that many times when we ask questions or want need information, if a person is overwhelmed with work, how is it that they can fulfill two positions? Because then we have our city manager that is filling two positions also. And a lot of times people are calling and they're complaining to us that they're not getting answers, they're not getting callbacks or anything. So it seems like there's a conflict there. We don't have a financial director, but then you pay a financial institution three times what you would pay a finance director. It's a problem here and we need to get it fixed. It's nine of us here. There's no reason that this couldn't be taken care of. And we need, when our residents ask questions, we should be able to answer right here and not wait later because they're calling and not getting answered, not getting called back. There's a problem here. And we adding more and more on one particular arm of this government. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Clark Griffin.
And as I say, it is, it says no financial impact, but there has been many times when it say that it's no financial impact. And there are impact. There is money that we paying. And I don't know, I, I mean, it's really good. I don't think, um, this has been done out of the kind of a hard taking to do. I, I just fail to believe that. And like I said, it saves a lot of time. There's no impact when there is money that we are coming out. Thank you.
Well, the memo states here, financial impact, none. So, uh, and that is it, right? Chair recognizes Commissioner Canard.
Thank you. Many times they said it's no financial impact, but then our budget has been completely eliminated and we don't have money to do this, that, and the other. So talking about financial impact, I think we as commissioners need to know more about what's the finance are. And I have asked about finance and I was told that they'd have to go to the city manager and we're his boss. So why would we have to go, they have to go to him in order to give us an answer, especially when it's finance?
This Commissioner Canard, um, listen, I'm gonna read the resolution. It says, resolution appointing Tiffany Moore City Clerk as assistant city manager. Whereas section three point one seven of the city charter states, the manager subject to the approval of the commission shall name one of the directors of departments, quote unquote, assistant manager, who shall, when directed by the commission, perform the duties of manager in case of the sickness, absence, disability, suspension, removal, or resignation of the manager. Whereas the city commission hired Tiffany Moore as city clerk on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, whereas city manager Alex Little as consultant with Clerk Moore, and she agreed to serve as assistant city manager along with her duties as city clerk. Therefore, be it further, be resolved that, that Benton Harbor City Commission, at the request of city manager Alex Little, hereby approves the appointment of city clerk Tiffany Moore as assistance, as assistant manager to serve as mandated under section three point one seven of the charter of the City of Benton Harbor, and not therefore be it further resolved. So the charter is very clear. It's very precise in terms of the role of the, the assistant manager, the process of how the manager is appointed and confirmed, and when explicitly the assistant manager takes on certain duties.
I understand that, ma'am, what I'm speaking about.
Right, but I mean, you, you.
I didn't finish what I had to say.
Ma'am.
Now, and she is working with the election and there's other duties that need to be taken care of. She was overwhelmed with the last election. Now, this, these things has got to be looked at ahead of time.
Commissioner Canard, again, it states here from the city charter, this is not from, I don't have, this is from the city charter, the manager subject to the approval of the commission shall name one of the directors of departments, assistant manager, who shall, when directed by the commission, perform the duties of the manager. So if the manager is not sick, if the manager is not absent, if the manager is not disabled or suspended or removed or resignation, then the, the duties of the assistant manager is dormant.
I, that's what I'm talking about. I know that. But if, by chance, she's working with the election and at that particular time, something like that happens.
Well, she has.
Then that's a double duty.
Yeah, she has a very able and that's why the city clerk appointed a deputy clerk. And this is a government. So we have, that's why we have a mayor pro tem and at large commissioners, because in the event that the pro tem or the mayor cannot perform a duty, then that's where, uh, a first ward or, or at large or fourth ward would step in. Because it's a team, it's government. So we have to work together, but we also per charter have to have certain things in place. So the government continues to run, not based on an individual or personality, but based upon a system. And that's what we are trying to do tonight, is follow the charter. Madam Clerk, would you like to share any words? Please call a roll.
To Henry Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Griffin?
No.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Commissioner Canard?
No.
Mayor Muhammad?
Yes.
Mayor Carey.
This brings us to our staff report. I'd like to recognize our fire chief, and I say that proudly, Chief or Director Casimir.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing for public safety in the city.
Chair recognizes our city clerk and assistant city manager, Clerk Moore.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, so, um, as was mentioned, we do have an election this year. Packets will be available for pickup tomorrow for anybody that wants to run for two seats for Commissioner at Large or Third Ward Commissioner or Fourth Ward Commissioner. Those packets are due back into my office, no later than four P M. on April twenty-second. Your packet will have everything in it that's needed. Um, if you have any questions, reach out to my office and we'll get you through it.
Chair recognizes city manager Alex Little.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had a busy weekend, this past weekend with, with the snows and so forth, but the public works crews are keeping up with it, keeping the streets clear. And, uh, we're out even today, salt him to try to minimize potential accidents and so forth. We are as a city enforcement enough to be receiving and wrapping up a number of grants that we've been applying for, for some time in one of the government places, uh, as soon as we can. Uh, none of these grants, uh, so far are actually designed to allow people to just come in and apply for them, whatever, uh, as we get them and as we get the, uh, get them executed, which will bring them before the commission. Uh, and if there are, whatever the conditions are for their use will be outlined in that. People will have information.
Chair recognizes fourth ward Commissioner Clark Griffin.
I'd like to thank every, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Uh, new year, new opportunities. Got a lot of great things coming in the fourth ward. Um, you know, I have all my annual events, but I got even more coming. So good things to look out for. Gonna be a blessing even more this year. Have a good night.
Chair recognizes Commissioner at Large Canard.
I'd like to thank everyone that came out tonight. It's cold out and we know it's, the weather's slippery, so please drive carefully. And I just thank you because it's a real sacrifice, especially when it's cold and the weather's not excellent for driving, that you would spend your time here. Thank you so much and please come out and encourage others. You need to know what's going on with your government. Many times we are asked as commissioners, but we can't give you answers to a lot of times why you're not getting callbacks or whatever your, uh, questions are. But continue to come out and encourage the city of people, uh, around you or people that you're acquainted with, encourage them to come out and ask the questions that they need answered. And then we can push for you all to get the answer. Thank you so much for coming out and happy new year to all of you. I wish many blessings upon you. Thank you.
Chair recognizes third ward Commissioner Henry.
Thank you, ma'am. And I, uh, thank all the citizens that did come out tonight and went there on YouTube. We have not had very many meetings. A lot of them been canceled. I don't know if the citizens knew why the meeting were canceled, but there's a, a problem with the heating, what I was told. So new year, everything's coming back again. A lot of money flowing into Benton Harbor. Uh, not a lot of information being shared. Um, so I don't know what to tell the people. Just keep asking the question and showing up. Thank you.
Chair recognizes second ward Commissioner Warren.
Thank you everyone for coming out and I wish everyone a happy new year. I don't have any current activities planned. Um, we will have another town hall, but it'll be probably in the spring. In the meantime, if you have any issues, feel free to contact me. Um, our contact information is on the website. Um, and I can take any concerns anytime. So, uh, reach out to me if you have any issues and that is all. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Commissioner at Large Isom.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Happy new year. New year, new things. Expect great things to happen. Uh, oh, where this come from? Uh, but, uh, expect, uh, I have an event coming up. We all gonna have an event coming up. Uh, I think it's the first, son, Super Bowl? Super Bowl, yeah, that's where they'll be at too. The Lions will be at the Super Bowl, so there'll be something happening. Uh, just wa, watch it on your local channel. Uh, but we got a lot of things happening in the city. Uh, you know, the funds are coming in, uh, streets are getting fixed. And it's a new year. It's a new year. Teamwork. Teamwork, Miss Canard. We gonna make this work together. Commissioner Canard.
I'm afraid that's.
Let's go with your outfit too. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. This, uh, this commission has been great. And twenty-four, twenty-five is gonna be a great year. Fire Department, Public Safety, uh, congratulations, Clerk Moore. I was part of the personnel finance was a part of the hiring process for the clerk. And she went through a rigorous, uh, uh, interview and she came in, she had her cowboy boots on and she, she don't do something. I said, you said she up for it. I said, okay. And, uh, it's time for evaluation. You gotta get that. Uh, we did have evaluation, evaluation, uh, handouts. I think it's been about, uh, a year or two. But she up for evaluation. We gonna get those back out to the commissioners so we can get her a straight evaluation on how she been doing. Congratulations again for her and, uh, say warm, expect great things. Go with your shirt.
Washington Commander thing. Yes, ma'am. Uh, we do want to recognize, uh, first ward Commissioner, Commissioner Henderson.
Good evening, everyone. Happy new year to all who've come out tonight. Congratulations to the clerks for being appointed, uh, for their new assistant manager. Just like with the clerk's job, you've taken every task at hand and you tackled it very well. So thank you for your service. I really do appreciate it. I've learned a lot, um, even my role just, um, for your service. So thank you so much. I know you do the same for that opportunity. Um, my word for the year for our city is hopeful, which is optimistic for the future of Benton Harbor. Um, there's a lot of great things happening, uh, for the people who've been managed here throughout all of the challenges and trials and just to see, uh, Benton Harbor, um, turn a corner and, uh, just becoming, um, a great place in southwest Michigan. It's, it's just an awesome experience. And that's, uh, Commissioner Isom talked about, made part of this commission, but it's been a part of many of those changes. So I'm just so thankful, grateful, um, for that and, um, keep on coming and, um, keep, uh, staying involved. And we have several committees who have openings, um, that'll go through the legislative committee. So sign up, um, and be a part of the changes happening in Benton Harbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner at Large Singleton.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I thank everybody for coming out also and those who are viewing on, uh, YouTube. Uh, congratulations to the clerk too. Uh, just a few reminders, you know, we in the cold weather now and, uh, it's even gonna get colder. I think next Monday's supposed to be, uh, eight with wind chill factors, uh, below zero. Uh, those who know people that are, you know, scuffling with, uh, keeping their houses, uh, warm and heating with, uh, you know, uh, space heaters and stuff, you know. and heating with, uh, you know, uh, space heaters and stuff, you know, it, it is, uh, very dangerous. Uh, there's already, I think, been a couple of fires, uh, in the last, uh, week or so. Uh, people heating with, uh, space heaters and, you know, uh, stoves and things. So, uh, if you got any family members, anybody you know, uh, please, you know, try to direct them to, you know, some type of help to get, uh, some, uh, uh, safe heating. We don't, definitely don't need a tragedy, you know, because somebody was cold, so. With that, uh, everybody have a safe rest of the week here.
Thank you, uh, just like to, uh, thank everyone for coming out. Um, I do want to say congratulations to the city clerk. Uh, this is the first time that a woman has been named the assistant city manager for the city of Benton Harbor to my knowledge. Um, so that's, um, certainly a milestone, I believe. Um, March Waters, uh, standardly correct, it was the first. Um, so, um, it's a new day in Benton Harbor. Uh, we are making, um, a lot of changes. Um, transition, transformation. Uh, the EPA grant, uh, was applied for, um, by the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission. That was the, uh, Inflation Reduction Act Community Grant. Um, and it will be used, uh, in multiple ways. Um, it's a three-year grant. Uh, so you'll have, uh, homes becoming or getting more energy efficient. Uh, it also will cover workforce development, uh, which will be job training for residents. Uh, the grant will also be working with Benton Harbor Community Development Corporation and nonprofits like the Workforce Development Institute, and let us rest to provide job training. Uh, the Boa Brazil Community Center will be used for, uh, the last goal as the planning commission has earmarked two point six million, uh, for approvals. Um, the two point one million is on top of, or two point six million is on top of the one million, uh, grant that the city got. It also will entail, we will have electric vehicle charging stations. Uh, but in all, it, it comes out of the one point six billion, uh, Inflation Reduction Act that was passed bipartisan by the Biden Harris administration. Uh, so, a lot of that money is being spent now. Uh, but it is, um, I think, historic for the city of Benton Harbor to, um, partner and receive that large allotment. Uh, I also like to just, uh, inform you that I will be going, uh, on Wednesday, uh, at the invitation of Governor Whitmer, to witness her address, uh, at the Huntington, um, place in Detroit, uh, at her auto show, uh, Economic Development Address, uh, which will cover the next two years, uh, of her bipartisan economic development plans uh, that will cover housing, uh, the history, the, uh, future of the auto industry, uh, and also how, um, monies can go back into residents' pockets. Uh, so I'll be bringing back a report on that at the next council meeting. Uh, I do like, um, I would like to reserve the last fifteen seconds as a moment of silence for one of our employees who worked late for sixteen years, our former city clerk, Clerk Kimberly Thompson. So I'd like to have a moment of silence. I can make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion made by Commissioner Henderson, supported by Commissioner Singleton, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Clark Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson? Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Commissioner Canard?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp seats, uh, Mayor Hammond.
Yes.